Okay, good. I can hear you guys now.
Oh, thank you. Perfect timing.
Good morning, yes. Sorry for the delay. Okay, so we'll begin the meeting with Secretary Mazelot, please calling the roll.
Todd Hobler.
Present.
Ben Lenahan.
Present.
I am present. Carrie Phillips.
Here.
Jeffrey Stone.
Present.
Susan Swartz.
Present.
Denise Wilson.
Here.
Albert Tu.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, so I think right at the top, we'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
A motion made by trustee Bezzell, seconded by...
Second, Susan.
We've got to get a second on the record.
I have second.
Okay, okay. Motion made, seconded. All those in favor, if you want to call the roll, could you just say aye?
I think we can just say aye on this one.
Yeah, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so we're in executive session. Thank you.
This meeting has already been called, the order of rules has been taken. We have a quorum. I'm going to begin the meeting just by reading the mission statement and then we'll go into the consent agenda. SUNY Erie Community College meets the needs of a diverse student body, contributes to regional economic vitality for providing high-quality, flexible, affordable, accessible educational programs committed to student success. So our meeting has underway. The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have items.
Len, I don't mean to interrupt, but we do need a statement of why you went in and came out of executive session.
So we could deal with the personnel item, a personnel item.
Hold on, I have some language on that.
Yeah, I think Kate's got language on that.
We went in to deal with a matter leading to the appointment of a particular person.
Yes, it was moved by trustee Lenahan that a particular individual be appointed as interim president of SUNY Erie Community College. That motion was seconded by trustee Stone and the vote was six to two.
Okay. So we are now on the consent agenda. So we have items one through four. Does anybody here have anything on any of these items?
The particular individual will be appointed as interim president of SUNY Erie County College. That motion was seconded aside by trustee Stone and the vote was six.
If you're not speaking, please mute.
Okay. Can we proceed? So we're on the consent agenda. We have items dealing with, you know, previous minutes, items submitted to SUNY, contract extension with WeCare Transportation and talent management, as Kate mentioned. So Kate, you've already spoken to that, right?
Yes, and I'll move the consent agenda.
I had one question. I don't, is Penny on the line?
I'm sorry, who's on the line?
Penny.
It's asking if Penny.
Yes, yes, I'm on the line.
It's Jeff Stone and I was, I had a question on the matter involving the WeCare contract that's part of the consent agenda. And it just looked like there was.
Right.
Yeah, there was a three-year contract starting in 2017 through 2020. It got amended in 2019 and there was a fairly substantial increase in the amount to be paid under the contract. And I, I'm thinking that there was probably some degree of increased service associated with that, but.
Correct.
Can you tell us why we amended that contract in August of 2019? And, and now we're extending it for one year, but I, it just triggered in my mind the question of, you know, why we amended it midstream.
Right, so we amended it in midstream because we were adding some routes per the student, per student requests between campuses and, and housing to make sure that we had everyone going where they needed to go and they had the transportation to do so. They were, they had originally tried to cut some routes because they were trying to keep the dollar amounts down, but it was causing issues for our students. And so we made a decision that we would support. During this past year, we would support some additional routes to ensure students that needed to get from south to city or city to north or whatever, to do their programming, to do all of their classes. Because we are moving to a kind of a three-campus concept instead of having all your classes on one campus. You might be traveling to get your degree done on time. So we went ahead and added those routes to that contract, negotiated that, and then covered those out of, out of our funding, even though we hadn't charged the students for those, just to make sure that they were making it to their classes.
Okay, and it looked like to me that there was a consistency throughout at that $56 an hour rate. But that the, with the route expansion, it just created a greater amount of funds that we had to pay to them. But it looks like they were keeping the charging protocol consistent at 56 an hour. It's just that there were more hours involved. Am I correct in the way I'm thinking about that?
That's correct. That's, that's all we did. They have gone back and I think that they're working, I don't know if Katrina's, she's probably not on here. They have gone back into renegotiations with both the NFTA and the We Shuttle to, for this next year. Kind of given where we are looking at online versus in person, just to make sure that we've got enough transportation. We're able to get those labs up and running, then, then that's, that's to make sure those are covered.
Have we generally been satisfied with the services WeCare has provided?
Yes, yeah, we added them because we didn't have, there was, it was so hard for the students to get between our campuses. We had a smaller route and then we have started adding to it in the last couple of years.
Albert, have you heard anything by way of complaints about the shuttle system from the students?
No, no, the only thing I heard was, I had it close a year ago about frequency. They themselves are fine.
Okay, I'm satisfied. I just had those questions. Thanks.
Certainly.
Okay, any other questions on the consent agenda? If not, Kate has moved the items one through four. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there's been a second from Susan Schwartz. All those in favor of approving the items one through four on the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, the items have been approved. Okay, we're now going into committee briefings. Our favorite committee these days, budget nudge it, budget not it. Jeff, anything, there's a couple of items that were approved, yeah?
Yeah, thank you. Okay, I think the board is pretty well up to speed on what's happening. We've had a number of briefings and we've all been following the news events. We have the minutes from last meeting where, where I spoke rather extensively about the federal stimulus, the problems that we were experiencing before COVID. The COVID-related problems that have occurred by way of uncertainty regarding enrollment. And of course, potential state and county cuts to our budget of great significant amount. And we are grappling with those as best we can in an atmosphere where we do not have complete information. The big, the big piece of missing information continues to be what stimulus money will come. I was going to say if any, but I'm pretty certain we will get some stimulus money in New York State. States and municipalities, localities, people who depend on the states and counties for funding like us should see some help in the so-called HEROES Act that was passed early in May by the House of Representatives and is now in a state of negotiation between the House and the Senate. The latest I've heard on this on a call the other day was that it will probably be July before actual legislation emerges from Congress. That to me is a bit surprising. I thought they would act quicker in May, given, you know, the problems that all the, all the municipalities across the country and all states are experiencing as a result of the pandemic. But we don't have action yet and it seems like we may not until early to mid-July. So that's where we are. In light of the great uncertainty that creates for us. We have taken the step as a board to see if we can defer with the assistance of the county, the submission of a proposed budget because we consider the preparation of a, a budget in this atmosphere as almost misleading or unhelpful. Because we don't have enough information to put it together. Ultimately, SUNY needs to have an approved budget for us by mid-August. That is when they need to approve whatever we come up with between the county and the college. So we're working with the county. Last month, we obtained a one-month deferral of our submission to the county of a proposed budget. And this month, because not much has really changed since last month, we are seeking another deferral to at least mid-June and possibly longer. We have to go through the county legislator, legislature to achieve that. And I think Chairman Lenahan and Penny can comment further on that. We're moving along and we suspect that we will be granted a deferral of some period of time. And so for now, we are not presenting a budget. We are hoping for additional information that will allow us to present a meaningful budget as opposed to something that would be less than meaningful at this point. So we're using that, shall we say, the space, available space in that SUNY-related schedule to try to get better information out of Washington and work closely with the legislature as we are doing that. So we don't have our resolution regarding maintenance of effort or the approval of an operating budget or the approval of a tuition and fee schedule, even though you see those on our agenda. We will be deferring those to a meeting yet to be determined. We don't. Chairman Lenahan will have to talk about the schedule, I think, of what we'll actually do, but we are in a deferral mode right now. Let me pause there because before talking about the Workday ERP financing, I would like to see what comments Chairman Lenahan has about the schedule and the legislature and then what other comments other trustees or people have questions about where we are with the budget. I'll stop there.
Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, I do have an update for you. I had a solid couple of hours yesterday of productive activity on this request for an extension. I contacted and received responses back from the Chair of the Legislature, April Baskin, and also had a real, like a solid hour with Tim Callen, who, as you know, our former trustee is the Chief of Staff of the County Legislature and just about everything over there, you know, certainly goes through him. So we had, the good news is everybody is more than willing to work with us on this. There was absolutely no opposition to the, you know, for us requesting this extension. Tim outlined a, a schedule that would, you know, if we could have our budget before the legislature. Their final meeting of the summer is July 23rd. So we have to get to a committee meeting before that, which would be, I believe, on the 16th or 17th, a week before that. So two days before that, we'd have to have our communication on the, on the agenda. Just to meet their mechanics of their timetable. But the bottom line is Penny and, I don't know if I've talked to you since then, you know, all avenues are open. They're trying to help us out everywhere they can. I'm, I've got, I've got to talk to the chairperson today further about the details. Mark also, the county executive is also very interested in helping us. He felt bad that we couldn't do the executive order, but he's, he's going to be working with us once we submit our paperwork to him. And so, yeah, I think things are looking good for the extension. Penny, I think you can breathe a little bit easier today, knowing that, you know, everybody wants to be cooperative and they want to be helpful. There is no picky own opposition over anything, so.
No, and I also had the opportunity to talk to Maria and to the Budget Office. And they both understand completely on board and very supportive of, you know, us doing what we need to do to give them a meaningful budget. So the only question I have for you guys is we, even though we didn't get the, that piece on the agenda before it came to you, you guys will have to vote on the resolution and all of that so we can get it forwarded to the county and go through that process.
Right, okay.
Okay, so Chairman Lenahan, is this when you would like to vote on a resolution calling for a delayed submission of our budget to the Erie County Legislature, consistent with these discussions?
Penny, is this, let me say, for your purposes, Penny, in preparation, is this a good time to send that over? I mean, I assume it is, but.
Yes, so I really.
We actually could do it in June too, but.
Well, I, it would be, well, I need it now because the budget is currently due on the 12th. So I need for y'all to, to vote and say yes, that we've talked about this, we are in support of this, so I can get those documents signed and get them all forwarded to the county so they can move it through their process.
So shall I read the resolution?
That'd be great.
Yes, it'd be.
Okay, the SUNY Erie Community College Board of Trustees Resolution Regarding Budget Submission and Recommendation Deadline for SUNY Erie Community College dated today, May 28, 2020. Whereas on May 4th, 1989, Erie County Legislature adopted a resolution, COMM10E6, which mandated that SUNY Erie Community College shall submit its annual budget prior to May 10th to the county legislature and county executive for review and recommendation. And whereas the aforementioned resolution mandated June 1st as the date by which the county executive must submit his recommendations for the SUNY Erie Community College budget, both Erie County Legislature and the Budget Committee of the Erie County Legislature. And whereas SUNY Erie Community College has experienced financial effects from the current COVID-19 pandemic crisis, which has delayed the development of its budget. And whereas the Erie County Executive and the Erie County Legislature have recognized these financial effects through the previous extension of the budget submission deadline. And whereas the budget deficit information expected from the state by mid-May has not yet been received, nor does the college anticipate receiving the funding information until early July, as it is dependent upon the next round of federal stimulus funding. And whereas, based on this information, SUNY Erie Community College requests an additional time extension to submit a budget to the community, to the county legislature and the county executive. And whereas, based on current information, the college expects to move forward a more informed budget for the fiscal year 2021 year by mid-July. Whereas granting the college's request will dictate the need for an alternate date by which the county executive will submit his recommendations for said budget. Now therefore be it resolved that the SUNY Erie Community College requests the Erie County Legislature to authorize SUNY Erie Community College to submit its annual budget for the fiscal year commencing September 1st, 2020, ending August 31st, 2021, according to the following schedule. A, SUNY Erie Community College shall submit a budget to the county executive and county legislature by mid-July 2020. And B, following review with the Erie County Budget Director, county executive shall submit his recommendations for said budget to the Budget Committee of the Erie County Legislature and the county legislature no later than July 23rd, 2020. Resolve that the balance of communication, NE-6 adopted May 4th, 1989, remains unchanged and in full force and effect. And resolve that beginning January 1st, 2021, the college's budget. And resolve that beginning January 1, 2021, the college's budget submission and review process shall revert back to the date set forth in the aforementioned resolution, tested by Lennahan, Chair of the SUNY Erie Board of Trustees. That is the resolution before us now.
I'll make that motion.
Sorry, Jeff.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Motion approved. Second by Todd, the Hobler. So the motion's been made, it's been seconded on the resolution. Does anybody have any discussion? We've covered it pretty well.
I'll call the roll.
Okay, proceed.
Todd Hobler.
Approve.
Len Lennahan.
Approve.
I approve. Carrie Phillips.
Approve.
Jeff Stone.
Approve.
Susan Swartz.
Approve.
Danies Wilson. You may be on mute, Danies.
Approved.
Albert Chu.
Approve.
It's unanimous approval.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. If there are no further questions on exactly what's going on with the budget, we'll continue to engage with college officials, particularly Penny, whom we thank for the hard work that she's doing in her position to try to manage through this. We do appreciate that as a Board of Trustees. We'll continue to maintain good dialogue with college officials about this as we navigate through and wait for the information that we can rely on in putting a budget together that we'll be able to submit to the county. Assuming no other questions on budget, and stop me if there are, I'd like to move on to the ASC Secretary Certificate that you find on page 49 of your materials. Basically, what this involves is the Auxiliary Services Corporation coming to us and saying, because we have had problems financially with respect to declining enrollment over the last three years, plus we've had to go into suspension as of March 16th as a result of the Governor's New York Pause Order in response to the pandemic, we, the Auxiliary Services Corporation, is asking us to suspend what's called the Article IV Facilities Payment. This is a payment of 15% of the commission revenue that the ASC receives from bookstore operations in the preceding fiscal year. And essentially, what they're saying is we're in tough financial straits, we'd like to not pay you, the college, this 15% payment that we otherwise are obliged to pay you. And I certainly understand the circumstances, we'll certainly hear from Penny about this. I would just point out, in looking at the resolution that's on page 49 with the certificate that came to us from ASC, what ASC is saying is that they want to have this suspension and that would, the Article IV payment, beginning with the payment that would be due from the fiscal year ending August 31, 2020. And then the important language is, and continuing thereafter until ASC has recovered from the interruption in operations caused by COVID-19 pandemic. And it goes even further, though, and I just want to make this clear to my fellow trustees, it's not just during the COVID-19 pause that this is being suspended, but it goes on to say, and the enrollment decline of the college, and until the ASC has achieved a position of full financial solvency. Now, that's not really defined, but what we're saying here is, it's not just suspending this payment during the pandemic and the COVID period of time, New York pause. We're going further and saying, we just can't afford this ASC payment, and we're not getting it. I'd like to ask Penny kind of how much money this has amounted to historically and what her thoughts are on this.
Right. Well, this is, I want to say relatively new. It's something that changed a few years ago, but I'm going to let Sue Holdaway, who is also on this WebEx with us, kind of talk about the history piece. Dollar-wise, I think, and Sue can correct me if I'm wrong, it's around $70,000. And what we had been doing with that funding is we had left it in the ASC side of the House for the provost and for the EVPs to be able to use for things like team building and some of those other things that are more difficult to do out of college funding to give us the flexibility to create partnerships and team building and College Day and those kinds of things out of that funding on their side of the House. So Sue, are you on here?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you want to talk a little bit about the history of this? And then this is one of the meetings that I didn't make it to because we had conflicting stuff with budget, but talk about kind of how this will work and what it is you're looking for.
Okay, as Penny said, the Article IV payment is relatively new. It basically says that we pay rent for the use of space in the college. And it has been as high as $78,000. It's definitely decreasing each year as the bookstore sales decrease. We anticipated that if the payment was going to be made for the current fiscal year, again, unknown book sales in August with the unknown scenario of what the fall will look like, but I would estimate that this payment is now down to about $35,000. So in discussing it with the ASC Board, we talked about scenarios that involved, the rent that we're paying is basically for space we occupy to provide services to students. And we looked at a similar 501(c)(3) foundation, which does not pay rent, and the Auxiliary Board felt that in order for us to continue to focus on what's important, which is the services to the students, those being food service and childcare and the bookstore services, the ATMs, the vending, that we don't feel that it's appropriate to be paying the facilities payment at this point in time. And again, enrollment has seriously impacted our bottom line and has caused a serious deficit of our fund balance.
We didn't have a budget committee during which we could delve into this particularly, but Penny, do you have a reaction to what Susan has said here? How do you feel about this proposal?
I'm good with this. This is actually something she and I discussed before they put this in front of them. They are, they take a hard hit every year based on enrollment. Their funding from us is entirely based on enrollment. The dining services and the bookstore size is also entirely based on our enrollment. So they are trying to manage their resources in the same way that we are without completely going down to zero fund balance at all. And for us, this is not something that we rely on for our normal operating budget. This is something that we have in place with them to kind of help us with some of the, some of the things that we want to do for faculty and staff and all of those that would probably be suspended during this period anyway. So I don't have an issue with this, especially, as Sue said, that the amounts have been decreasing. And looking at what we had this year, a $30,000 payment over the next couple of years while our enrollment goes back up, hopefully, is not going to be detrimental to the college, and it could mean a big, huge difference to ASC. In addition to that, ASC has also partnered with us and been very helpful in helping us support the county through providing those meals to the emergency workers ever since March, what was off in March, Sue. So I have no problem supporting this whatsoever. I think it's the right thing to do.
Even, and you're saying that even though it has somewhat of an indeterminate ending, in other words, until they achieve fiscal solidity.
Solvency.
Solvency.
Full financial.
Yeah.
Full financial solvency, yes.
Right. So it's, we all understand it's not just the COVID period of time, it's a longer thing, maybe a couple of years, right? When we, more, that we might not see this money. Okay, I'm satisfied with Penny's response, and thank you, Susan. But other trustees, any questions or comments before I make a motion?
I think it's pretty straightforward, I think.
Okay. Well, then I'll move that we accept the concept as.
But I'm not comfortable with, you know, it going to, you know, without having any, a finite date.
Well, Albert, so this is Penny. So the CFO I serve, this position serves on their board. We get quarterly financial statements from them. That information flows up to you all at the board meeting. So you guys are watching, along with ASC, where the financial position is of the ASC on a quarterly basis over the course of the year. So we will know, we will see when they reach a point where their revenues have turned around and they've created some stability in their revenue stream versus their expenses. So my anticipation, given the way that we are looking at what enrollment will do, probably, if not this year, into the end of this year and into next year, because of our reverse relationship with a recessionary period, I would expect that we will have a conversation on this at the board level, at least biannually, if not quarterly, over the next two years, and then reach the point where we negotiate or we go back and say, you're solvent, we want, this is going to end. So that, that piece of it, there's that management and that supervisory piece of that, that will keep this from being an indefinite, unreviewed item.
I understand.
Any others? All right. Assuming that we're comfortable with the way Penny responded to Albert's question about the indeterminate term here, and I think I am, I'll move that we, as a board, approve in concept the suspension of the Article IV Facilities Payment pursuant to the language in the Secretary's Certificate that we find on page 49 of our materials, subject to ongoing oversight by the financial professionals at the college and by the board, with the hope of eventually restoring the payment, but for the moment having an indeterminate period of time when we are suspending this.
Do I hear a second?
Todd.
Any other comments? That, on the motion made by Trustee Stone, seconded by Trustee Hobler, all those in favor say aye.
I think we need to call the roll.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Todd Hobler.
Approve.
Len Lennahan.
Approve.
I approve. Kate, Carrie Phillips.
Approve.
Jeff Stone.
Approve.
Susan Swartz.
Approve.
Danies Wilson.
Approve.
Albert Chu.
Disapprove.
So that passes seven to one.
Okay. All right. And now, assuming everyone's ready to move on, the last item, and sorry to have so much airtime here, but this is where I think most of the action is in this meeting.
Right.
We have the matter of the Workday ERP financing arrangement. You'll see it as Item 2 under my committee's report there. And for your materials, you can go to page 50 and following. Now, I'll give a summary of what I think about this, and I'm going to ask Penny to chip in, too, because there's a lot there. But I will talk about how I carefully reviewed the lease proposal, the RFP response from First American. And I do a lot of work in this area, so I feel comfortable reviewing this and talking about it and sharing my views. And I'm certainly very interested in Penny's assessment of why we're doing this. But I'll try to summarize it quickly. What we have here is our Workday that we had planned to finance strictly from what I'll call the Reserve Fund, our accumulated savings account. That was, it was viewed as a one-time unusual, one-shot expenditure that was appropriate several years ago or two years ago. That was decided, and we've been progressing along that route of paying for it out of cash. We've already paid, I don't quite know what percentage Penny will have to say, but some percentage, perhaps 40% of it, has been paid, or 30%, and the rest is still yet to be paid. Again, until pandemic hit and our, backed up by our enrollment issues, we were on a path to continue to pay this from our Reserve Account because of its one-off nature and its importance to the college. It really is important that we have Workday in place. So the proposal now is, we have some difficult budget, you know, before pandemic to deal with. We now have pandemic, we have substantial state and county aid cuts looming, still to be determined, but we have now placed a greater emphasis on preserving our cash that we actually have at this time and maintaining liquidity and avoiding expenditures of cash and deferring expenditures of cash until we have a better handle on federal relief, enrollment, state, and county cuts. To me, these are valid business reasons for rethinking some of the points that we originally led us to pay for Workday out of cash. So Penny, in attempting to find out how we can deal with these budget challenges, has been approached and has found a firm that is willing to finance the cost of Workday. And there are two components of that cost. First, the money that we've already spent on Workday, and second, the money that we are yet to spend on Workday. Finding financing for money that you're about to spend in the future is relatively easy. Finding money that essentially reimburses you for what you've already spent in the past and rolls that into the total financing package is much harder to do. First American has approached the college. They're a firm based out of Rochester, and they're affiliated basically with RBC, a very large North American bank. And they've said, we'll come to you and we'll give you a financing proposal that will allow you to take back cash to your Reserve Account that you've already expended and furthermore finance the future amounts to be paid here. With the net effect of this being stretching out by about two additional years, the period of time during which we will be paying for Workday, and yes, we will be adding an interest component, a cost, to it. So what we're buying is cash preservation relief, timing relief, in exchange for an extension of the time that we pay and a cost to finance. Now, in your materials, page 50, you know, one of the things I always say to my clients at the office is, when you get into lease purchase financing, and that's what this is, we would be technically leasing the Workday system, and we would, at the end of, say, two to three more years, we would pay $1 and own it. So it's a fairly short-term financing. It's not 10, 15 years, but it does buy us critical time to figure out where we are with state and county aid and with enrollment, and maybe gets us to a point on the other side of the enrollment problem where if we have a significant recession as a result of the pandemic, maybe more students come back and our enrollment goes up. That's at least the hope. So they came to us and said, we'll help you. And Penny, I would characterize as being supportive of this. And she and I have talked about it. When I reviewed the proposal, to me, it looked like a very typical lease purchase financing proposal with two exceptions. One, it was the situation where we were able to get reimbursed. That you never really do see happen in a financing proposal. It's all about financing what's going forward. I don't have any trouble with that. It's just a fairly aggressive cash preservation strategy for us, actually cash restoration strategy for us, okay? So that is what, that was unusual, but not troubling to me in this proposal. The other interesting thing about the proposal was that they don't take collateral like most financing arrangements would insist upon. Now, if you picture this as an $8 million loan, and why would someone give you $8 million when you're in some financial difficulties and you're facing cuts from the state and county and so forth? Wouldn't they be worried about not being repaid? Well, normally, a bank resolves that concern by saying, yes, we're going to give you a loan, but we're going to take an interest in some property that you have, your car. If you don't pay us, we take your car back, your house. If you don't pay your mortgage, we repossess your house. That's how banking works. This is not that. What they're saying is, we're not going to ask you for any collateral other than the system itself, and we know that it's kind of an intangible thing, it doesn't have much value, you know, outside. So their comfort and their assurance does not come from collateral. Where does it come from? It comes from them doing their research and knowing how critical this asset is for the maintenance of our college. Their thinking is, I'm going to loan this money, but I know that Erie County Community College is going to, is going to make this payment. Because if they don't, their entire operation grinds to a halt. The whole place functions on Workday or will in due course as we blend it in. So this is where they're fairly aggressive. They're going to say, we're going to reimburse you for some stuff and really make the package, you know, bigger by about $2 million than it otherwise would be if we were just doing stuff going forward. And we're not going to ask you for collateral. We're not taking a mortgage on the buildings. We can't anyway. The county owns the buildings. You don't, our school doesn't own those buildings. What could we give them? I don't know. Property and something. But they're saying, never mind all that. We just know that we're going to take our comfort from the essential use nature of this product. So those are the two big things. Now, when I looked at it and I looked at the term sheet, the lease proposal, I always laugh because I say, one thing about a lease proposal like this, it's impossible for the client to figure out what the interest rate is. And I told you that there's a financing cost involved with this. The document I'm looking at now, if you have it, is on page 58. Your, the document I'm looking at now, if you have it, is on page fifty-eight of your materials, and what you see there is the amount that we're borrowing, if you can get to it at the top. There's two schedules, a reimbursement schedule and an implementation schedule. Under reimbursement, you'll see that we're borrowing and really getting reimbursed to us, two-point-four million dollars, almost two-point-five million dollars, and that will be repaid over twenty-four months with a monthly payment of a hundred and six thousand seventy-six dollars, and, and you'll see lease type, a one-dollar buyout. At the end, we will, you know, own the system. The other piece of it is the going-forward money, six-point-four million dollars. This will be financed over thirty-six months, and again, with a one-dollar buyout, and we will have monthly payments, in this case, of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. So, adding what Penny will be paying monthly on this, it's a hundred and six thousand plus a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, or two-hundred and what, ninety-four thousand dollars if my math is right. So roughly three-hundred thousand dollars a month, but it's predictable, and it goes on for two years, and then some drops off, and then the rest of it goes for three years. So we won't have the spikiness of cash outlay that we've had with Workday, with some months being high spending and some months being low. It's very steady, three-hundred thousand a month, easy to plan for. The leasing company loves to promote that and says, well, make your life so predictable and so easy to budget, so easy to manage your cash flow, and there's truth to that. But kind of what they're getting in, in, in consideration of that is they're getting an interest rate from us, so, all right, Penny has a handle maybe on the interest rate and certainly on the amount of interest that'll be charged. We've talked about that. I, I tried to calculate it by looking at the, the monthly payment and the amount financed and the term. So if you're borrowing two, under reimbursement, if you're borrowing two million four fifty-four for twenty-four months and you're making a monthly payment of one oh six oh seventy-six, you can go on the internet and figure out what the interest rate is. You know, it's, there's, there's monthly calculators. So I came up with it, and Penny will have to correct me if she thinks I'm way off on this, but you don't see, the number I came up with is three-point-five-four percent on the reimbursement side and three-point-six-eight percent on the implementation schedule of the forward-looking money. So I said to myself first two things. First, I hope I'm right about this. I think I am, based on these numbers, but it's not easy to see, you know, what the, the rate is. If you look down to the word rate on the lease proposal, it's all but unintelligible even to, you know, a veteran finance lawyer like me. You're, it talks about the Treasury swap rate and baseline reference rate fixed for the duration of the lease term, index rates, you know, it's really confusing. And I don't think they affirmatively try to hide it. You know, this is not a terrible rate, three-point-five-four and three-point-six-eight percent, if I'm right. It, it's, they'll make a healthy profit on this, and we will lay out more money than we would if we paid for this out of our savings account, but we're buying deferral. So that's what I have by way of analyzing this, and I'm comfortable, I don't think three-point-five-four and three-point-six-eight is so out of line, given that they're not getting any collateral other than an interest in the system itself. They're basically going in bare here and making us a loan. Let's admit it, we do need this financing arrangement. I think Penny is counting on it to try to have her bulk, her budget, whatever it may be when we finish it, look something like what we can live with. So Penny, I'm going to stop there, but that's how I thought about this proposal.
Well, thank you so much. You actually did a very lovely job of summarizing in, in more layman terms, kind of the whole concept behind this. The only thing I want to add, excuse me, the only thing I want to add is that these, these pieces of this financing agreement are done one year at a time. So right now, if you guys approve this, the first thing that will happen in June is we will get the reimbursement amount that is on there, and that contract will be put into place and set at that rate and spread out over the next two years in payments. Then for, then we'll begin to work on the one that will kick off for the next fiscal year, which is this one that's coming up. So that will be a separate contract that will be a three-year term, and the same thing will happen just for that amount that we need for that year. The next fiscal year, that's kind of in that six million dollar, and again, that six-point-four million dollar was the max amount we thought we would need. Because the way these are structured, I'm only going to finance, as we hit each year, what I think we need to keep us stable. Given that, again, we're talking about, due to this crisis, we're entering or have entered into a recession, maybe slash, I don't think depression, but we're trying to manage that, we are anticipating at some point in the next twelve months that our enrollment due to this is going to start going back up, and that, that we're going to enter into a regular enrollment recession cycle for community colleges, which means our revenues will go up, which means that come next summer, I may be at a point where, after we talk about everything and we look at where our financial position is, that we can borrow as much in this, this leasing agreement moving forward, so I can take less in a lease contract for the rest of the ERP project if we're in a better financial position a year from now or, you know, in that last year. So this is not locking us into the entire amount. This is giving us an option in how we move forward with financing this, given where we are financially at each of those annual points in time.
Oh, that's a really good point. So you're not borrowing eight million dollars right off the bat and paying interest from day one on that total amount. Not at all.
No.
And lease purchase fin-
And I will, I will tell you this, they will true up the, at the end of each year, they'll look at what we actually spent, and they'll true up the, the contract to that number to finish the payments out.
Yeah, and fellow trustees, this firm that's offering this proposal, you know, is, is certainly reputable, but, you know, RBC is a big, big North American bank, and they are, they are certainly going to, you know, work with us on this. Lease purchase financing is something very commonly used in the world. There's our own law firm, when we have new computer equipment to, to buy, we, we could have the money to just write a check for it, but we often do spread it out over a period of time using lease purchase financing techniques to have that predictability, to spread the cost over a greater number of partnership years, not just one, to preserve cash for other purposes, whatever. Some of the same reasons that we're thinking of here would apply not only, you know, to my business and to many other businesses. This company has offered this product and I guess been engaged by about eight hundred other colleges and educational institutions, according to their proposal. So it doesn't strike me as unusual. It's just a, a thing that we might not have done if we had been flush and didn't have declining enrollment and if we didn't have pandemic, but I think it gives us a very valuable cash preservation and even restoration opportunity. I'll stop there.
That's all I have unless there are questions on that.
Go ahead.
Yes, one question. If we're to pay out of pocket, what would the total cost be? How much more are we paying with this method?
I mean, I estimated that depend, over the life of this, we're going to pay probably four to five hundred thousand dollars in interest over five years. Um, but again, it spreads it out, and I, we don't have to go that far, given how many of these contracts we decide to set, annual contracts we decide to set up. It's about, it's about a ten to eleven million dollar project overall. We have already covered out of revenue in eighteen nineteen, our own revenue, that, that we're not getting reimbursed for. We've already covered two-point-one million, two-point-two million dollars of that out of our, out of cash already. We paid for, that was, no, wait, I take that back. We have covered, we've covered some of it out of the seventeen eighteen budget out of our cash. We dipped into the fund balance in eighteen nineteen for two-point-eight million of it, and that's where the fund balance reserves dropped to fifteen-point-three. That's in the, the financial statements. And then everything moving forward, that, that's the, the contract is giving us back that eighteen nineteen, no, not eighteen nineteen. No, it's giving us back what we've paid so far. I, I, I'm sorry, my, the contract, I've got so many numbers rolling in my head. Anyway, overall, it's a ten, ten to eleven million dollar project. We are going to finance, right now, the anticipation is we'll finance about eight million of it instead of the other amounts that we already paid out, with the anticipation that if the enrollment increases like we're anticipating it's going to do due to the recession, we won't even finance the full eight million. I don't know if that answered your question or not. It's complicated.
Well, you were, and Albert, you're trying to get to how much extra money we're paying here by doing it this way instead of paying out of pocket. Is that what I'm?
Right, but I believe Penny said about fourteen, four hundred, five hundred thousand.
Yes, and Penny used that figure with me in a phone call about a week ago, and I looked at it last night. I, I couldn't really do the calculations myself, but I said, you know, I ran, what would it be if we, if we financed eight-point-eight million dollars at three and a half percent for two or three years? And, you know, it, because there's two strands, it's not super easy to do that math, but I just kind of ballparked it, and it's looked to me like four, four hundred and fifty, something like that. So that lined up with the number that Penny had shared with me, and I thought, okay, that's probably where we are here. Penny, do those numbers that I quoted you, three-point-five-four and three-point-six-eight, I'd like to know if they're wildly off. I don't think they are, based on the math here.
No, not, not based on the conversations and, and the work that I've done too, you know, and looking at this. I, I think we're in that ballpark, and again, it's just dependent upon how many of these we take out moving forward.
Yeah, I like the flexibility, and that is very consistent with lease purchase financing. You have a master lease agreement, and then you take chunks of money under that when you need it. So Penny, I guess our, our thought would be, you know, get the restoration and preserve cash, but, but don't borrow too soon or too much.
Right.
Yeah.
My anticipation is that we'll get the, we'll get the, the cash preservation piece. We'll set this first year up for the year we're going into, which is the twenty-twenty-one, which is the year we're going to struggle in, you know, and, and understanding between enrollment, the healthcare issues, all of those things. And then what my plan is and what should be built into this, what you guys should be expecting, is that this conversation will happen again when we enter budget cycle next year to talk about whether we feel like, based on the performance to date of the fund balance and our revenues generated next year, whether we feel like we want to enter into the second one in twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay, so that's an important concept. We are not committing today to borrow eight-point-eight million dollars necessarily. We're just setting up a facility that allows us to access money to that amount if we choose to do so.
Correct, and we, if you want, I don't know how the language reads in here. I don't think we specifically wrote it that way, but we could tweak the, the resolution for you to add that component where you review and approve before we enter into each new annual component.
I think we should do that. I'm not sure. Do you know what page the resolution itself on? I'm not sure I saw.
Um, I, I don't. I've got my documents I sent to you. I don't have the, the full-
Page fifty-one.
Oh, thank you. Let me just look at that. Yeah, I did read this. Okay, so, and it says at the end, "Enter into a financing agreement as defined above and the attached proposal." So if you look at the proposal, it looks as though we're borrowing eight-point-eight million. It's not very clear to me. Well, it does talk about each scheduled takedown. I think that could be just clarified, that we don't have the obligation to borrow this full amount.
Right.
Right? If that's the deal that you've made with them, and it should be, I think we should build that in.
Okay, that's fine. Um, do you want to craft the language here, or do you want? How do you, how do we need to do this?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion, and then we'll have to just, after the facts, you know, deal with it, okay? So we've got the motion on page, well, let me make sure there's no other questions or comments from other trustees first.
Any other questions?
But we'll have to read the resolution with your additional language.
Yes.
Right. Do we need to read it, the whole, on page fifty-one and fifty-two? Because I can just, we can just, the whereas clauses, perhaps we can skip.
I think we can add an extra whereas clause right before the "now therefore be it resolved", where you say, whereas during the annual budget cycle, or the annual budget preparation for the College, the Board will have, will review or have a discussion on whether or not to pursue the next segment or installment of-
Or takedown.
Or takedown, right, of the, of the, of this financing agreement.
I know, I think that's more of a resolve than a whereas.
Okay, all right.
Right, okay. So assuming the whereas clauses are fine, and I think they are, it, it will now read, we'll have to, and we're being recorded, so we got, "That the SUNY Erie Community College Board of Trustees authorizes SUNY Erie to enter into a financing agreement with First American as defined above and in the attached proposal effective in the fiscal year twenty-twenty budget year, comma, with the understanding that the SUNY Erie Board of Trustees will be empowered to approve each individual takedown under this financing arrangement prior to it being finalized."
One more time.
Well-
With the understanding that the Board of Trustees will be authorized to approve-
To, to approve each individual takedown under this financing arrangement before it is finalized.
Okay. My understanding is that because we are meeting remotely, the entire resolution needs to be read. Is that correct? That was the advice I was given. Because some people may not have the information in front of them.
Go ahead.
You think the whereas's need to be read?
I wish I didn't, but I do.
They're not that long, and it's, this is really an important thing for the College, so go ahead, Kate.
All right, so the SUNY Erie Community College Board of Trustees Resolution Regarding Workday ERP Financing Agreement dated today, May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty. Whereas SUNY Erie Community College is currently implementing Phase Three of Workday ERP System, and whereas SUNY Erie performed an exhaustive search for an organization that would finance already incurred Workday expenses as well as future expenditures for implementation phases of the project without SUNY Erie utilizing physical assets as collateral. And whereas, as a result of that search, First American offers this unique financing model, and it's helped more than eight hundred schools achieve their goals similar to SUNY Erie's. And whereas, First American is uniquely structured as they include essential use considerations in recognizing the cloud-based Workday ERP system is essential to the operations of SUNY Erie. And whereas, First American does not require tangible assets as collateral, and First American also allows for our already incurred expenses to be reimbursed and financed unlike other traditional lenders, which require tangible collateralization of other college assets, and will only finance remaining ERP spend in an equal value of the collateralized assets. And whereas, SUNY Erie is now in a financial situation due to declining enrollment and the COVID-nineteen crisis, where it needs to protect as much of its liquidity and reserve balances as possible. And whereas, SUNY Erie has obtained a reasonable and responsible opportunity to manage the highly variable monthly cash spends of the Workday ERP implementation by partnering with First American. And whereas, reserve funds currently devoted to the Workday ERP implementation in addition to the enrollment and COVID-nineteen issues create a fiscal strain on the College budget that needs to be mitigated. And whereas, partnering with First American would allow for fixed predictable monthly payment schedules over a longer period of time, thus allowing for reliable budget preparation and better cash management in this fiscally unstable period. And whereas, First American would allow for already incurred Workday ERP expenses to be financed over a twenty-four-month period, and whereas, First American would allow for future Workday ERP expenses to be financed over a thirty-six-month period, and whereas, approval by way of a resolution by the Board of Trustees of Erie Community College is necessary in order to enter into such an agreement. Now therefore be it resolved that the SUNY Erie Community College Board of Trustees authorizes SUNY Erie to enter into a financing agreement with First American as defined above and in the attached proposal effective in the fiscal year twenty-twenty budget, with the understanding that the Board of Trustees will be authorized to approve each individualized takedown under the financing arrangement before it is finished, finalized. Uh, seconded by Len Lenahan. So that's the resolution.
I'll second.
Good job on the takedown.
Who moved it?
Is motion made and seconded?
Motion made by whom? I'm sorry?
I think Jeff made the motion.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'll make that motion.
And it was seconded by?
Todd? Is that okay?
Sure.
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay. Motion made and seconded on the question. Let me just say, first, excellent job, Jeff, in the, you know, we're, we're very happy to have you on this board. This is a complex item, and I think you're a big help to Penny and the entire board in explaining all the nuances of this. This is, this is finance, and it comes at a time when we, we barely need, you know, these creative mechanisms to keep this place functioning. So thank you for a job well done on explaining and, and worked with Penny on this, and, and Kate for working through all this language for us. Thank you.
So we'll call the roll on this?
Yes, let's call the roll.
Todd Hobler?
I approve.
Len Lenahan? Len Lenahan?
Approve.
I approve. Carrie Phillips?
Approve.
Jeffrey Stone?
Approve.
Susan Swartz?
Approve.
Denise Wilson?
Approve.
Albert Chu?
Approve.
Unanimous.
There we go.
All right. I think Chairman Lenahan, that concludes the business under the Budget Nodded Committee heading.
Great. Thanks, Jeff. Great job. Um, so now move to the rest of the agenda. Um, and the next committee is Policy and Governance. Kate, I doubt if you've had, you know, time to meet or so.
Yes.
Is that the open report?
We have no meeting and no report. Um, we have some draft minutes when we meet next that will come before the board for its receipt. I do at some point need to amend the minutes from today's meeting because I realize that in the open meetings law requires that we list the votes taken on the interim president resolution. So let me know when you want me to do that. I can do it now or.
Okay. Why don't we do that now?
Done. Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So um, it was moved by um, trustee Lenahan that a particular individual be appointed as interim president of SUNY Erie Community College. That motion was seconded by trustee Stone. The vote was seven to two.
Six to two.
With uh, trustee Hobler, trustee Lenahan, trustee Masiallo, trustee Phillips, trustee Stone, and trustee Wilson voting in the affirmative. And with Susan trustee Swartz and trustee Chu voting in the negative, there were no abstentions.
It was six, right?
Did I say seven? Sorry, six. All right, clean that up. But now we've got everything. So thank you for that. Sorry for the missed step.
Thank you for getting that done. Um, so, okay, there's no policy and governance committee report from Chair Masiallo. Um, Chair Hobler on strategic planning. I doubt if there was a committee meeting in the intro.
No, we haven't met since uh, March and and just before the shutdown. Our next um, meeting is scheduled for August, although I'm thinking that we might move that up given uh, the uh, the budget discussions and and probably the need to sort of think through some strategic planning. So um, hopefully at the next board meeting we'll uh, have a a report to offer the trustees.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, the Curriculum Student Success and Diversity Chairs Susan Swartz and Denise Wilson, there are some items for board information. Anything you'd like to discuss?
Yes. Um, hi, this is Denise. In addition to the items for uh, board information, um, I do want to kind of talk a little bit about what we what we discussed during that meeting. This was our first meeting uh, since the pandemic situation happened and we we pretty much let people focus on the faculty, staff, SES focus on the immediate needs of the college. And I just want to commend everyone who um, had a role in moving classes online and um, getting students uh, technology that was necessary and also keeping us up to date as changes were happening, happening sometimes daily. And also, I I would like to just take this moment to commend everyone involved, especially Paula, Sandy, who um, for putting on the graduation online. I think she did a really good job on that. So I just wanted to say thank you, Paula, and your team for the work you did there. We did have a robust conversation at the meeting and we were talking about one key thing specifically was how did COVID impact our students and um, that our students were given options and um, asked to, and Doug, you can chime in at any point, um, as to, well, not asked to, but if they were having difficulties via online learning or what have you to uh, take and complete. And so we talked a little bit about how many students were impacted and Fabio was gracious enough to give me those numbers. And I think I got about twenty one percent of our total students that were um, not able to complete uh, specific courses or such. And um, if I'm if I misspeak in Fabio or you need to go into a little bit more detail, feel free to jump in on that. So I guess at our next next meeting, we're going to talk a little bit more about the students and what the college did to help support these students and to make sure they are not too far off track. Albert, I don't know if you've heard anything about this either. But um, we do want to make sure that none of our students are lost during this transition or during this pandemic. And so we are going to lift up these these this the students who were impacted within the next couple of months, hopefully that they will be enrolled in our or are currently enrolled in our summer sessions, one if not two. And speaking of summer sessions, one or not two, we did also have discussion about um, faculty um, deciding to in our natural science department, I think Doug for the correction, um, deciding to um, teach in some of those courses. And it was a consensus pretty much in our meeting that we would hope that they will all do so. And um, from what the message I just got from Doug that they they are pushing for summer two for for these natural sciences uh, uh, classes to be offered. So again, that students aren't falling behind. Um, I do also want to commend PJ for the work that he has done as far as getting all of or many of our our labs and um, um, looking at creative ways as far as simulations and case studies for our students as opposed to actually uh, what do you call it, clinicals in order for them to complete their degree programs as well. We had more conversation about um, I guess Tracy Archie, actually, I'm just pointing my nose. Tracy Archie talked a little bit about what she is doing as far as diversity and inclusion in regards to the our disability, our people with disabilities population, um, training, education, seminars and such. And also that there's going to be some upcoming changes in Title Nine regarding sexual uh, sexual assault and harassment and there. And she was attending um, I'm so I think Zoom conferences and such to get uh, acclimated with those laws. And I'm sure that if there is any policy amendments that they will come into up to Kate's um, Kate's uh, committee. The last thing, well, it's not the last thing that we talked about, but I wanted uh, Fabio to talk a little bit more about middle states, give us a little update on that. And he's going to do that in a moment. Because there's been a, it's been some time since we had a a update and I I just asked him to do that. But we also, of course, talked about application trend, retention and and recruitment. Um, and I would think uh, President Hakoi will be talking more about that during his his report, so I won't be redundant. And that. We also talked about persistence, if you're if we're wrapping it back into diversity and inclusion. But we're talking, we talked about persistence in uh, specific degree programs, especially especially in underrepresented uh, popu- uh, populations or students such as African American males. And Fabio has agreed to kind of work with me on some and excuse me, obtaining some of that data and going from there. So with that being said, um, I guess I'll let that. If if no one has any questions about anything I've said, I'll ask Fabio to kind of talk a little bit about the middle states.
Certainly. Thank you, trustee Wilson. Uh, thank you all trustees for having me today. It's always an honor. Um, the um, what I want to do today is just give you some assurance that we are on track with our middle states process. And so I'll talk a little bit about our timeline, just to keep it to a couple of minutes uh, so that you're aware of both the timeline and where we are on each of our milestones. The um, you'll recall that the process began around October of last year when we visited the Self Study Institute. That was an invitation only event um, hosted by the Middle States Commission. And what they did at that event, and Doug and I attended, was to summarize the process and give us some of the basic tools for building the self study. That was our first milestone. We met that milestone and it's really that kickoff point uh, on the project. The second major milestone was when we hosted um, our a visit from our liaison, Dr. Sean McKittrick, most of you have met. Uh, he came on February twenty seventh. That date is uh, probably um, one that you measure the world against these days. Uh, so it's uh, it was timely for us. It was lucky for us that we got that visit in before uh, we started locking down. The that visit led to the completion or at least the draft culminated around the completion of the first draft, what is called the self study design. So that was really our third major milestone. We completed the self study design um, and had a conversation with Dr. McKittrick about it. We had some assurance at that point that we had a good structure going forward for the self study. Um, and that was a major step for us because now we knew that we could move forward on the writing, on the development of that self study with some certainty that we were approaching it appropriately. Um, we started doing that in early spring this year and we kept the beat. Fortunately, we were able to host all of those meetings online. We were able to stay on a pretty steady drumbeat of meetings every couple of weeks. We only missed one date, maybe two um, due to the disruptions. And as a result, we're we're still on time. Uh, our timeline is still intact. We are still looking at a fall twenty twenty one uh, visit and a summer twenty twenty one delivery of the self study. So approximately fourteen months from now, fifteen months from now, we'll be delivering this self study. About six weeks after that, we'll have the self study uh, peer review visit. Right now, uh, Middle States has been moving a lot of those visits to virtual formats. I don't know. I can't anticipate what will be the case next year certainly, but um, but we might end up in that situation, obviously, if necessary. And the virtual formats, um, they they're a little bit unfortunate for the institution because it does mean that you have to still have a regular visit at some point. That is um, uh, that's a legal requirement and that's something that the Middle States Commission can't undo. So at some point, we'll have to have some kind of follow up just to make sure that the part of the visit that can't be handled virtually, the facilities review, that that takes place at some point. Uh, but that's a that's a minor, I think, logistical issue going forward. I think for now, I can at least report to you that we're on track. All of our milestones have been met on time so far. And we are now looking at the next major step, which is the completion of our current evidence review this spring in about two weeks and moving forward into the first draft of the self study. Um, and that'll be completed over the or at least begun over the summer and completed over the fall. Any questions? Happy to answer them.
Any questions for Fabio?
Good.
Okay, if not, we'll move on. Thanks, Fabio.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fabio.
It was good to see you. Um, so we have four items for receive and file, which we will do. Um, we'll move on to the report of the chair. Um, my basic report has been the facilitation and working with the staff on um, putting together the uh, the search um, and interviews for the acting or interim uh, president. That is going to, by the way, we I just can't thank um, Kelly Gale and Bob Germani for all the detail they um, uh, applied to this, the mechanics of the search and everything that was done to facilitate the interviews and uh, everything. So when you see them, thank them and maybe send them a note uh, or an email. They just they were just stellar in uh, being available at night, weekends, what have you. So that's that's basically um, it's the genus, that's my report. So we'll move on. Uh, we have a couple of resolutions dealing with early retirement. Um, Penny, before we move on these resolutions, is there anything you want to add to this?
I I don't have anything. Tracy Cleveland is also on this phone call and HR has been very actively managing. So if she has something, I'll give her the opportunity to say something. But other than that, I think.
I know votes being taken tonight um, by the uh, the Administrators Union on the on the incentive. Tracy, anything you want to add to this discussion here?
Actually, that was just what I was going to say, that the vote was being taken tonight by the administrator. So I don't know if you want to approve it contingent upon them uh, voting yes, or if you want to just approve it. So I was gonna just maybe have that for a discussion. Because if it doesn't pass tonight, then it won't be offered. So do you want to approve it just contingent upon a yes vote from them tonight?
I think that would be useful in that the Administrators Union has been a little more, um, you know, had ever have a vote with a full body. It's taken more time. It's caused a little tension along the way. So I, as long as it's proper, I have no problem approving this resolution anticipating they'll be interested in the uh, yearly retirement. Todd, what do you feel about this?
Well, if we need a contingent on tonight's vote, it would uh, it might uh, preclude them from revoting if it goes down the first time. We might just leave it open ended.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
So Tracy, that and you're comfortable with that as well?
No, I'm I'm comfortable with that because their their deadline to submit their their letters is June fifteenth. So if it doesn't go down tonight, I don't know how much more time they would have to plan another vote. So but I am comfortable with that, yes.
Okay, that's fine. Whatever you recommend.
There's the the administrators and there's also the resolution for SES.
Right. It's it looks like to me this resolution simply opens up the uh, early retirement to the senior executive staff.
Correct.
Anything else to add to that?
Isn't there?
Oh, two members of SES that are eligible for it. Um, and um, so I wanted to be able to open that opportunity up. I don't know if Penny wanted to add anything to this as well.
Um, are you talking about the the possibility of of if we had SES members?
Yeah, correct.
Um, so my my thought is is if we do, since we did went to the county, this was really for the AAACC and the FFCC, that if we did have an SES member that wanted to um, also retire as part of us planning for how we manage the budget next year, I figured that we would come have a conversation with you on leveraging um, our dollars for for that. I don't think we've got the a couple of people even eligible. So I don't, we're not talking about a lot of money.
Right.
Todd, this is Jeff. Um, if the if there's a June fifteenth meaningful application deadline here, and if we uh, are not meeting before June fifteenth as a board, and if board approval is somehow required, should we should we approve this uh, on the subject to tonight's vote? And then I guess we have to reconvene if tonight's vote doesn't go as in a positive direction. I'm just trying to think, uh, if a board action is necessary, is there a way to get it before June fifteenth if we don't vote now?
Yeah, well, that's the thing, Jeff. They would have to submit their letters. Their letters have to be in by the fifteenth. So if they don't vote yes tonight, they'd have to really scramble to pull another vote together, be enough time to give people time to research whether or not they want to retire. So um.
The only, I'm sorry, Jeff, I uh, Tracy, I the only thing I was just is we, the way the resolution is currently, it's sort of open ended. And if we were tying it to the vote tonight, uh, uh, that may put limitations on another vote. But you're right, this would be hard to have another vote uh, before the deadline. So either either way, I I just wanted to make a note that if we tied it to tonight's vote, there that would keep it from uh, keeping the union from being able to vote again.
I suppose we could we could approve it. We could approve it.
I would just approve it because if it's contractually, if they don't approve the MOU, we're not going to offer it anyway. So I don't think it's going to hurt. If it's approved, we just can't offer it.
You know, we approve it from our side. It takes two parties to enter into a successful MOU. So if they don't approve it, it won't happen. But we can approve it.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to approve it because given all the tension and the this the drama we're going through here, um, if we could get this settled, you know, just get this passed, if they go along with it tonight, then at least it's done. Um, otherwise, we have to come back and do that in June, correct?
Correct. And well, you won't be able to do it in, I mean, I I just think you should just approve it. I don't, you won't have time.
Yeah, because the deadline's the fifteenth of June. So.
Right.
Creating deadlines are not that big.
I have received, and I have received only one letter so far, but I suspect maybe I will get others if it's a. And I have received only one letter so far, but I suspect maybe I will get others if it's approved. So I just don't think you'll have enough time to pull yourselves back together in a quorum to approve it again. And I don't see how they're going to pull themselves back together to vote again.
So let's, you know, Jeff, are you proposing to approve the amendment on the Administrator's early retirement?
Right. My thinking is we can approve it from strictly our own perspective and leave them to vote as they wish. And if they vote for it, then we got a deal. If they vote against it, we'll have to deal with that.
I'm uncomfortable with moving it right now. It's just leaving that option open. If they don't take it, then they don't take it. But we don't have to come back again, and I don't see how we're going to be able to come back again and do this.
Right.
All right.
So would somebody want to make a motion on the item dealing with the resolution, dealing with the Administrator's early retirement?
Perhaps I should read the resolution first.
And which page are you on, Kate?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight.
This is the AAC, right? That's what we're doing?
Right.
Okay. This is the SUNY Erie Community College Board of Trustees Resolution Regarding Administrator's Association of Erie Community College Early Retirement Incentive Participation as outlined in Memorandum of Understanding dated today, May 28, 2020. Whereas on December 5, 2019, the Erie County Legislature authorized $963,387 for Erie Community College to offer an early retirement incentive. And whereas such Erie County Legislative Resolution offered no specifics as to employee groups to be eligible for this incentive or the basis of providing such incentive. And whereas immediately after legislative passage of the early retirement incentive, Erie Community College entered into discussions with AAACC to structure parameters of the incentive as well as the eligibility for such incentive. Whereas based upon an analysis of employee eligibility of 15 years of ECC service along with a combined age and years of service of 70 or more, SUNY Erie has determined that 43 members of AAACC would qualify under the criteria specified in the attached memorandum of understanding which jointly negotiated between the college and AAACC. And whereas the Board of Trustees would like to extend the early retirement incentive to eligible AAACC employees as set forth in the attached MOU, and now therefore be it resolved that the early retirement incentive be offered to eligible members of the AAACC, and be it further resolved that this incentive is a one-time event and in no way changes any of the terms and conditions of the existing collecting bargaining agreement. And be it further resolved, the president and his staff are authora hereby directed to take the appropriate step to implement the early retirement incentive as outlined in the MOU with AAACC attested by Len Lenahan, Chair of the Board.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approve this.
Jeff, did you make a motion on this?
I think Kate just moved it, I think. I'll second it, though.
Okay, motion made. It's been seconded. Any other discussion on the motion before we move? If not, would the Secretary please call the roll?
Todd Hohler.
I approve.
Len Lenahan.
Approve.
I approve. Carrie Phillips.
Approve.
Jeff Stone.
Approve.
Susan Swartz.
Approve.
Danise Wilson. Albert Chu.
Approve.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. So the second item is the resolution dealing, and I know there's not many people eligible or maybe not even interested, I'm not sure, but it does open up the incentive that, to the senior staff. And so Tracy.
Yes.
Penny, you both commented on it, so it's pretty much perfunctory. We vote for it, give them the opportunity, correct?
It is the same, exactly. The only difference on this one is the individual who did express interest has until the end of the year to retire because from an SES perspective, there may be some loose ends that the individual would have to tie up. So we did give the date of exit to be the end of the year. So that's the only difference on this particular one.
Tracy, how many would have been for this?
It's only two people, only two people that are eligible and only one expressed an interest.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we have to move this. Katie, I guess you have to read this again, huh?
Yes. SUNY Erie Community College Board. It's my show today. The SUNY Erie Community College Board of Trustees Resolution Regarding Senior Executive Staff and an Early Retirement Incentive dated today, May 28, 2020. Whereas there is a group of managerial confidential employees at Erie Community College hereafter the college known as Senior Executive Staff, SES. SES serve at the pleasure of the president and are members of his cabinet and leadership team and are either policymakers or serve a policymaker in a confidential capacity as defined under the New York Taylor Law. And whereas on December 5, 2019, the Erie County Legislature authorized $963,387 for Erie Community College to offer an early retirement incentive. And whereas such Erie County Legislative Resolution offered no specifics as to employee groups to be eligible for this incentive or the basis of providing such incentive. And whereas immediately after legislative passage of the early retirement incentive, Erie Community College entered into discussions with both the AAACC and the FFECC to structure parameters of the incentive as well as the eligibility for such incentive. And whereas based upon an analysis of employee eligibility of 15 years of service to ECC along with the age and years of service of 70 or more, ECC has determined that two members of SES would qualify under the criteria, which is the same criteria being used for extending the early retirement offered to AAACC and FFECC members. And whereas the Board of Trustees would like to extend the early retirement incentive to eligible SES employees utilizing the same terms and conditions as negotiated with the AAACC and the FFECC as set forth in the MOUs negotiated with both unions. And now therefore be it resolved that the early retirement incentive be offered to eligible members of AAACC and FFECC be provided to SES of Erie Community College. And be further resolved that this incentive is a one-time event and in no way changes any of the terms and conditions of the existing collecting bargaining agreement. And be it further resolved, president and his staff are hereby directed to take the appropriate steps to implement the early retirement incentive for SES consistent with the terms and conditions as outlined in the MOU negotiated with both the AAACC and the FFECC, attested Len Lenahan, Chair of the Board.
Okay, thank you.
Can I have a question? I have a question. Why is it on December 5, 2019, and the whereas? Why the Erie County Legislature? Why is it December 5, 2019?
That's when they approved it, right?
Yeah, that's when they.
That's when they approved the money to come to us, I think. I don't have anything.
It is correct, yes.
Okay, it just seemed awkward based upon going forward in May.
Yeah. No, that was when the money was approved by the legislature.
Okay, thank you very much.
It's just taken us this long to get MOUs negotiated.
Yeah, it threw me off a little bit. Thank you.
That's why. We've been better at working to get the MOU negotiated, so.
I'll move this SES resolution.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded by Carrie Phillips. All those, Secretary, please call the roll.
Todd Hohler.
I approve.
Len Lenahan.
Approve.
I approve. Carrie Phillips.
Approve.
Jeffrey Stone.
Approve.
Susan Swartz.
Approve.
Danise Wilson.
Approve.
Albert Chu.
Approve.
Also unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to the ad hoc committee reports. I don't think there's much to report. I know marketing, we have not met since the last time we reported, obviously because of conditions of what's going on. Technology, Carrie, I don't imagine you've had a technology committee?
No, nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. And talent management, Susan?
Tracy, I don't think we've had anything more on this, do we?
No, we don't have anything additional at this point. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Okay, now we'll move on to the President's report. Dan?
Thanks, Len. So the college continues to operate at a very high level under very challenging circumstances. I'm so very proud of how our faculty and staff have improvised and been exceptionally creative in ensuring our students continue with their academic programs with as little disruption as possible. One example of this creativity that trustee Wilson mentioned took place last Wednesday evening when we held a quite wonderful virtual commencement event, which was telecast on Facebook and YouTube. It was an evening to remember with videotaped congratulations from various dignitaries, including US Senator Chuck Schumer, SUNY Chancellor Christina Johnson, County Executive Mark Polinkars, Erie County Legislature Majority Leader April Baskin, our own Board Chair Len Lenahan, as well as other board members. I particularly want to thank Paula Sandy and Jerome from Communications as well as our ITS crew, especially the band of Bob, Nick, and Ryan for providing our graduating students and their families an opportunity to recognize our graduates' achievement and commemorate that important day. Again, we were hoping to be able to have an in-person ceremony to celebrate the class of 2020 sometime in the future. But this was a very beautiful placeholder as far as virtual placeholders go. So as the pandemic has evolved, so has the priorities of SUNY and Finister. What is abundantly clear from our twice-a-week calls is that the Chancellor Johnson is very committed to getting financial support for our SUNY institutions. She's busy advocating for support from the proposed fourth federal stimulus package from New York State law grants as well as operations and individual donors. And as we're looking at restarting, so note that we're not using the term reopening because we never closed. With Erie County possibly moving into stage two as early as Tuesday, the Chancellor has asked that we rethink how we deliver high-quality higher education with the broadest possible access for New York State residents. And she identified five principles that should guide any restarting. The first is putting safety first, that in making any decision, financial or otherwise, safety needs to come first. Secondly, in protecting the core academic areas of excellence. Thirdly, maintaining SUNY's fundamental mission of the broadest possible access to world-class teaching, research, and scholarship. Fourth, sustaining academic programs and achieving operational efficiencies. And fifth, demonstrating agility and responding rapidly to current workforce needs. And in addition to these guiding principles, the Chancellor just yesterday provided with a framework for a SUNY institution to assess risk in restarting. The framework outlines how to derive a campus risk index with three major risk dimensions, namely exposure, surveillance capacity, and coping capacity. So exposure includes four factors: on-campus, person-to-person situations, population migration, post-community status, and vaccine readiness. Surveillance capacity includes testing, contact tracing, and quarantine ability. And coping capacity includes healthcare and supplies, academic operations, community support, and financial resources. So restarting will be a continuous effort to evaluate risk factors, implement mitigation measures accordingly, and continually monitoring outcomes so that we can actively manage risk. So obviously, the Chancellor and the SUNY system is working closely with the governor's office to coordinate plans for resuming on-campus activities, including teaching, research, and scholarly activities. And so we have been asked to provide SUNY Erie's restart plan to SUNY Central by Friday, June 6. And we currently have Amy Yoder and Mark Matolek working on that document right now. So the Chancellor will also be meeting with presidents one-on-one and regionally to discuss needs of our campuses in preparing for the restart of on-campus operations. Also, just yesterday, SUNY and the New York State Office of Mental Health announced the launch of a crisis text line and training initiative. These are two sources designed to help promote mental health awareness, ease stress and anxiety, as well as identify and support individuals at risk of suicide. So SUNY is advancing these resources in order to assist students, faculty, and staff as they confront the COVID-19 pandemic. And I can tell you, as a clinical psychologist, I would say that these initiatives address a much neglected need in our community. Now, so much is focused on physical health and welfare, which obviously is necessary. But there are also unmet psychological needs as people respond and react to the coronavirus. So kudos to the Chancellor for her vision there. The SUNY Community College Presidents, who have been meeting several times a week, have been discussing the new marketing campaign for SUNY community colleges. So our tagline is "Stay Near, Go Far", which isn't that much of an extension from our SUNY Erie's "Start Here, Go Anywhere". The idea is to capitalize on students at local residential liberal arts colleges who may not want to be in the residential setting or may not want to pay private college tuition for only online courses. So this campaign may attract students who are considering a gap year in light of COVID-19 as well. So Paula will work to use these resources and this campaign to complement our institutional efforts in terms of SUNY Erie. The Western New York Presidents, who meet weekly, have been discussing plans for fall and dates for announcements regarding platform and instructional format. We've also been discussing, you know, how to do financial planning in light of the uncertainties surrounding New York State funding this year. What we're trying to do is coordinate announcements whenever possible so that one institution isn't singled out. And so we've yet to come up with a date to announce instructional format for fall as conditions are continually changing. So more on that to come. We have decided at SUNY Erie that the second summer session will primarily be remote, and that's in line with SUNY. The Western New York Consortium of 21 Private and Public Higher Education Presidents had a conference call with Lieutenant Governor Kathy Hochul last week to discuss restarting and the role of higher ed in reopening the Western New York economy. We discussed COVID-19 testing resources as well as some scenarios for residential colleges, if and when students test positive. So those colleges are having to plan for single-room quarantine spaces in their residences that have internet access so that positive students can be accommodated, which is obviously challenging for many of these private colleges. Additionally, some private colleges like Canisius are already finding that students only want to learn remotely, but that those colleges don't have the capacity to offer person-to-person as well as online courses. So they've asked for arrangements with other colleges to provide that online option for those particular courses. And I responded to John Hurley, President of Canisius, and let him know that SUNY Erie would be happy to provide students with the opportunity to take online courses with us and to partner in any other way during this crisis. That's all from me. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to my EVPs, Doug, Penny, and Mike, to provide very brief updates about any campus developments or initiatives in light of COVID-19 for the college offices under their purview. So Doug, you want to start?
Sure, I'll be very brief, and I apologize. I'm having bandwidth issues, so I hope I don't cut out. As you mentioned, summer two will need to be completely remote, per the governor and SUNY, even though we expect it's possible for our area to be in phase four by July, during which, during the phase that education may reopen. But both the governor and the system have announced that summer is remote. We're hoping, the system has requested a quote prioritization from the governor's office for SUNY colleges to offer face-to-face but socially-distanced instruction towards the latter part of the summer to resolve those incompletes for courses such as health sciences and engineering technologies, those hands-on, applied courses that went to section-wide incompletes. More on that, and I was in a conversation with Todd Larson yesterday. So I'm hoping we will get that approval. And again, we should be in phase four by then. So we're trying to resolve the incompletes from spring. Summer two will be remote, and we'll be modifying that schedule by the end of next week. And we are in contingency planning for fall. We obviously have a schedule built that's 100% face-to-face. We have the ability, as we did suddenly, to go 100% remote with the exception of those applied courses. So we will have to strategize on that if we have to go 100% remote. We are more likely to have our third option, which is more likely, our lecture and discussion classes going remote, as they are, and having socially-distanced face-to-face, small-section-sized, hands-on labs and clinicals and so forth. So that's our planning for. So that's our planning for completing spring, those incompletes, completing Summer and Summer Two, and our contingency planning for the fall. And I'll stop there.
Good. Thanks, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
Penny and Mike.
So this is Penny. Just a couple of things, I won't take too long. The college continues while Doug and his team work on making sure the students are being academically taken care of. We continue on our side to ensure that the campus is safe and clean and that, you know, our resources are available and accessible in a way that keeps it that way. So our COVID-19 Task Force, which still meets weekly, is continuing. We have created a subgroup of that emergency ops team for the return to campus initiatives. We continue to do support for the county through all the ways that we've discussed so far. The call center has finally been stood up. We've got about, excuse me, 35, 35 or so county call center employees that are working out of city now in their socially-distanced call center. One of the things that we have done is Mark and Amy had started early on a draft version of our return to campus plan before SUNY and all of them had started that conversation. We shared that document with SUNY a couple of weeks ago. And we ended up, about a week later, SUNY came back out with a document that looked very similar to ours. So I think we're kind of ahead of the curve a little bit. That's kind of helping us some. And then we're tweaking it for the additional guidance that we get from SUNY that Dan has referenced. So we continue to have weekly meetings on those with all the logistics and decision points for that return to campus scenario. And particularly as we're trying to figure out how many labs we can get back on campus this fall at a minimum, given, you know, kind of still what the projections are for the waves of this crisis. And then kind of I've kind of been trying to do a shout-out to some of my folks because everyone's working very hard and really, really stepping up to the plate as we are working at a distance, not 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 working from home, but working in a distance in very difficult times. So I want to say kudos to Tracy Kaufman, Megan Cleveland, the entire HR and payroll team. They have done a phenomenal job of getting everything shifted from happening in the office to happening remotely. Payroll has not been disrupted, HR services continue to to happen. And they have, they have done a heavy lift and are the primary pushers behind these MOUs for the retirement incentives, pulling all the data together as we look at, you know, our Brazil lines, setting up and preparing for our negotiations on our union contracts this fall. So I just want to make sure I give a shout-out to them and thank you so much, all of them, for all the work and the commitment and dedication they've given and shown us and the time that they've been here. That's all I have.
Thanks, Penny.
Mike. Good morning, everybody. I'm pretty sure Dan had shared my E V report that I sent out to the Foundation Board of Directors. So I just want to highlight maybe a couple of things. You know, in this environment, obviously, we're trying to be creative, move to new formats. With golf being canceled, we're still going to hold the auction on the day of the tournament. We're going to postpone that actually until September. Hopefully, things open back up. That's one of our major fundraisers for scholarship through the foundation. Things like the Thurman Thomas Camp, we're trying to get creative with the Bills and the NFL to deliver an online virtual camp for students. If you recall, there were 1,600 intercity youth football players that participated in that last year. And it's not only just a good community outreach opportunity, but it's also a nice introduction to the college and exposure to kids that might never have stepped foot on our campus otherwise. So and then in addition, we're getting creative. We're talking about creating a virtual 5K. We've created a committee. We're looking at July or August. If any runners are on the call, it's something that you do at your own pace over a defined period of time through an app and we'll get creative and give away prizes. And obviously, just like a normal 5K, you'd get a T-shirt and some swag to promote the college. The one item in the the report that it provided that I do want to highlight is the Student Emergency Fund matching opportunity through SUNY. Last year, before any of this stuff happened, we noticed a little bit of an uptick in unusual requests coming from the deans and others at the college about sort of specific emergency issues that our students were facing. And we went to the Foundation Board. I'd like, you know, shout-out to Susan Swartz, who is also a director at the Foundation for her support. We set aside $15,000 last year to create the Student Emergency Fund. And to give you some perspective, in the time that we created that, I think it was mid-year last year, heading towards the fall session, we've spent, we had spent down about only $1,500 to that. Since this emergency, we've seen an uptick, obviously, and the demand is increasing. And to give you an example, before it was, you know, a student lost their ID and couldn't afford the replacement fee, smaller items like that. Now, just to give you an anecdotal example, we have a student from New York City who is not allowed to travel back to New York to visit their family. So they're required to stay in Western New York. They didn't budget or rent to continue to stay in their current location. So we were approached through the deans and we accessed the emergency fund to cover the cost of that student's lease, at least until they can find a way through that or they start their next school session. So that gives you an example. If you read the report, SUNY's offering us a $50,000 dollar-to-dollar match for money we raised between April 15th and July 15th. And we're doing things, you all receiving letters. We so we have a letter campaign going out that will be a virtual campaign. Previously, Dan and I had talked to a local fundraising company called 26 Shirts. And we had talked about doing something creative for the Thurman Thomas Foundation and the college. We're going to approach them and see if they'll dedicate two-week shirt sales to the contribution for our Student Emergency Fund. So again, look out for that. I just wanted to highlight that. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, Trustee Stone had had asked at a finance committee meeting for me to respond to the recommendations of the audit internal control letter. And I had done that back in April, but is, you know, it happened when you're talking about a lot of things, maybe it got lost in the mix. And maybe just to remind people, there were recommendations on timely reconciliations for investment accounts, canceled bank checks. And then there was a recommendation about better communication between software and records and related to the frequency of these occurring. And then incomplete documentation on in-kind donations. And I just wanted to inform the board that we had actually made a lot of those changes before the audit had even come out. We had lost a staff person at the beginning, at the end of the 19 spring semester. And so we filled that open position. We got our board's approval to add a part-time bookkeeper. We did a reorganization to actually define the role of a business manager. And somebody in my office has taken that on. So we now are able to provide monthly reviews of all in-kind donations as part of monthly review process, as well as our bank and restaurant affiliation. We had, we had done that prior to the release of the audit. And also, the one last thing I'd mentioned in that regard is that the board trustees had defined, had defined the in-kind donation policy through the policy committee, which helped us think the organization, the college, better manage how we handle those. So I hope that answers your question, Trustee Stone.
Oh, Mike, it does. And thank you. I appreciate you bringing that up on your own and leaning forward and bringing it to closure. Appreciate that very much. Thanks.
Can I ask that that report on the in-kind, is that something we get?
Yes.
And so if that came in April, then that's what I missed? Is that there?
I'm sorry, if there wasn't.
When will we receive those?
Sorry, if there wasn't anything that came in, you wouldn't have a report. So you'll see them as they come.
Okay, got it.
And actually, the one last thing I will tell you is we did get it new. For those trustees and people on staff who've been around for a while, we've been talking about a Tesla solar donation for the STEM building for about five years. That was put on hold in light of all this. The county did finally reach out to Tesla. They're allowing them to do a plan to start that. And that should take about four weeks. We expect that construction to start over the next couple of weeks, once they get the approval of their plan from the county. That's, that is it. That's truly it.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Okay, unless there's something else, we'll move on to the student trustee report. Albert, too.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, Albert.
As always, I want to thank everyone for being here. Not just taking time out of the day, but their continuous efforts or to support the students of our institution, especially during a time like this. So on behalf of them, I truly thank you for your efforts. Today, I only have a few questions. The first, being named that A S C, Sue is still on the line. Is A S C Is A S C closing the South Campus Cafeteria?
No. We do not have plans to close it. We're, again, with all the unknowns. What we do know is that we will most likely be paring down food service, as all food service operators are, and most likely looking at more of a to-go situation.
Understood. At all campuses, correct?
Pardon?
Paring down food services at all campuses.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Well, the North Campus is actually a hospitality management curriculum lab. So that will be up to the faculty that run that curriculum.
All right. Next question I have is regarding commencement refunds due to the commencement being digital, with the students receiving, or have they seen the commencement refund?
All right, there, there we go. I couldn't get unmuted. So yeah, part of the fees that we refunded in the spring were in part the commence, that portion that they pay for commencement fees. So we refunded a portion of those commencement fees as well and left enough to take care of the the digital piece that happened. We will be discussing if we will continue, if we will have an in-person one at any point, given, you know, the particular criteria. And at that point, decide how we are going to, how we're going to cover that for those, for those students.
And has to be any resolution regarding pass/fail versus letter grades?
Albert. This is Doug. We have no plans to change our pass/fail policy based on the concern that it will do harm to students' opportunities for transfer, satisfaction of prerequisites and satisfaction of different licensure or accreditation requirements. Our existing pass/fail policy requires students to negotiate that pass/fail before the semester begins. I believe that's correct. And Colleen, you're, as a faculty member, you might know the detail a little bit more, but I believe that's true. When we thought about that and SUNY's brought it up, the concern was that there are many down-the-road consequences of of moving to pass/fail for any place, whether it's at our campus or a transfer or a licensure body that requires a C or better, a pass is a drug count. And so we would not want to disadvantage someone who has plans for a future where they might bump into that. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes, Doug. Thank you. The last question I have is for Paula Sandy. I know we've spoken of this before, but the possibility of getting SGA advertising on the, on the new revamped E C homepage?
I'm, we weren't talking about the, we weren't talking about the website. We were talking about the portal the last time.
Oh, it was Portal.
Yeah, and that's under I T S control right now. We don't, marketing doesn't actually even have editing rights to the portal right now. So that actually, I think that Mina was going to follow up with you guys on that. So you may want to just connect with Mina Lakavani after this meeting and see who they're going to have assigned to it. Eventually, the plan is that the portal will be a locked portion of the new website once it launches, but we won't be able to build that until starting in 2021.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, Albert, thanks so much. Okay, at this point, we'll move on to the College Senate Report. Is Colleen with us?
I am here. I'm here. Sorry, I unmuted myself there. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Colleen. Good to see you.
Sitting outside today because it's mayhem in my house. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
So I know, it's so nice to see everybody that, and everyone's faces and people that I'm not related to. But so with saying that, we had we had some elections and some updates, so we had to make some appointments. With the retirement, actually, we're losing the person that started the governance movement at Erie Community College more than a decade ago. Michael Delaney is retiring.
Oh.
So we had, yeah, it's, it's good for him. And I know, it's exciting. But so he's, we replaced someone, replaced him. Hopefully, you know, everyone's going to do an awesome job, but it's hard to replace him. Been a wealth of knowledge and a mentor for me for years. So that was some of the business we did. We're going to have our last meeting in June. And we're not really with all the COVID, a decision-making body currently, but more of an information body for the college. There's been so much information that comes out via email and, you know, all these other venues that we found that the stream on YouTube has been very helpful for faculty and staff to get out information. So it'll also be Dan's last meeting, so he'll be giving us an update. But we're hoping to have, you know, updates on budget, enrollment and marketing, which a lot of that stuff was already discussed today. There's going to be a virtual open house with admissions that's coming up as well. So we'll be talking a little bit about that along with the COVID update. And, you know, going on from there, we're also going to be having a virtual summer institute, which is a large professional development opportunity for faculty and staff. So our new C P D coordinator, Marion Partee, is going to be giving us some more information with that so that we can get some other professional development done over the summer. And really, we're just going to be an information body to, you know, help the faculty and staff as we move through this crisis and try to get through to our, our new normal. Summer Session One just started this week. So today's day three. So we've been working faculty and staff, and so has the Distance Learning Department to make sure everybody's all set so that they can get their classes successfully online. And I have some courses online. They seem to be going well so far. It's only day three, but I think everybody's in the same boat and everyone's supporting each other and trying to help out. I think my signal, my bandwidth is probably affecting my report. But yeah, that's kind of where we're at. We're just still working together and checking in with everybody and making sure that we are all going forward as one team to help our students.
Great, Colleen. Any questions for Colleen before we move on? Again, Colleen, we all appreciate, you know, the entire leadership of the Faculty Senate, obviously, with the College Senate and yourself, and everything it's been done to facilitate these classes and keep, you know, keep the college moving along during this, during this crisis. So we're very appreciative and we look forward to working together throughout the summer and hopefully get back to fall as normal as possible. We'll see.
Yeah, just one other thing. As Fabio mentioned, we're going to be doing our Middle States self-study. I'm writing the chapter on governance, so standard seven. And one of the pieces of evidence is going to be a self-assessment of the board. I'm working on getting that tool together and I'm working with Kelly. I'll get it to Kelly with more concrete directions and things like that. But just to give you a heads up, that's going to be coming in the next, you know, month or so.
Great, great. Thanks so much, Colleen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Colleen.
Good to see you, Colleen.
Great to see all of you.
Okay, Sue still with us from the affiliated?
Yes, I am.
Susan, anything you want to add to, we've got a couple foundation statements out here. Anything you'd like to add to the discussion?
Um, we don't really have any quarterly reports yet because they haven't been vetted through the Budget Audit Committee. But I just did want to let everybody know that because we're in a holding pattern, not knowing what the fall will look like, and because we provide services for on-campus students, we're waiting to find out what's going to happen. But in the meantime, we're investigating various scenarios, participating with other SUNY auxiliary executive directors, both state and community college, to find out what they are doing, what it's going to look like in food service, childcare, the bookstores. And as I said before, the trend is going to be to pare down food service, to-go versions. Everything should be touchless. Decisions would have to be made about public seating. Would we be allowing people to sit in the cafeteria spaces? Or would it strictly be pick up food and take it to go? So we're, we're looking at all of these things and considering what kind of effect it would have on the budget. But for now, we're in a holding pattern.
Okay. Appreciate. Okay, we'll move along into old business. Anybody have any old business to interject? If not, we'll move on to the new business. If not, we'll, we've already had the executive session. And now next, next month's meeting will not be information. It'll be a working session. I guess we'll have to get some language over to the office on that. But that June will, because of the budget situation and our, you know, extension with the legislature, we'll, we'll be having a working session in June as opposed to an informational meeting. So we'll, we'll work out the language on that so everybody understands that.
And in addition to that, we should probably state that we will likely have a special meeting of the board in late June, early July for the budget.
Exactly. And we will, we will send that message out as well. So let me just say this. I appreciate everybody's cooperation, collaboration. These are difficult times. Making all kinds of adjustments as we go along here with the budget being obviously a big one, but we'll get through this. And just appreciate everybody's contribution, regardless if you're faculty, administrative staff, certainly our trustees, our officers. This has been a, you know, a historic last three months, and I'm sure we're going to have some interesting times over the next three or four or five months, or longer, who knows. But anyways, we're working together. We're on the same team. And I, you know, just can't thank everybody enough. And so if there's any other business before us, I'll entertain motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Kate, do you have anything you need?
The other question I have is, you know, we did a voice vote on the consent agenda. And I mean, maybe we should just, to be, to be certain, roll call on that.
Okay.
Cover all the bases. So for the consent agenda, it was moved by me and segmented by Susan. So if we could just do the voice vote. Todd Hobler?
I approve.
Lynn Lenahan?
Approve.
I approve. Carrie Phillips?
Approve.
Jeff Stone?
Approve.
Susan Swartz?
Approve.
Annie Swenson?
Approve.
Albert, too?
Prove.
All right, that's the last you'll hear from me today.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you, everybody. We'll be, obviously, we'll be in touch a lot. This is a lot of communication will be going on as we get through this budget process and get ready for the next month's meeting. And any special meetings that we're going to have to do as well. So enjoy the rest of the week. Have a great weekend. Appreciate everybody and all the best. Okay?
Be safe.